All right, welcome everyone. It's seven o'clock, so we'll start our meetings on time. This is a kind of exciting night, you can recognize all of our students here. But we just have a couple of small items to get through before we do that. So first item is, is there any public comment? If not, then does anyone on the board have any proposed changes to the agenda? If not, we move right into the superintendent's report.
Wonderful, and as Dr. Miller said, this is an exciting night for us. And I'm actually going to ask Dr. Merrill Brownlow and Ms. Kristy Mullen to come to the microphone, and they are going to lead our Student Achievement Awards presentation here. And I think our board typically, we've gotten up and...
We'd like to welcome all of our families and our students here tonight. Once a trimester, we take a few minutes at a board meeting to celebrate the accomplishments of our students, which are very vast, and we're proud of their hard work and their dedication to not only their academics, but their outside activities that they balance very well to be able to succeed both in their academics and their activities. So, good job, everybody, we're very proud of you. When I call your name, please come on up, and you can get your certificate from Dr. Brownlow. And then the board would like to also shake your hand to congratulate you. Okay, we'll start with the ILMEA District Choir participants. We have Mac Schoonerman and Veronica Hunt. And next, we'll be celebrating our Civic Action Group for the Whiskey Conference. We have Emma McVicker, Jory Reyes, Ava Storant, Thomas Dixon, Eddie Blomgren, Gigi Montoro, Emmett Abar, Lily Abar, and Mayana Nelson. Congratulations. And next, we will celebrate our 7th grade soccer conference champs, Assault Valley Conference champs this year. Eddie Blomgren, come on back up. Liam Hickey, Emiliano Medellin, Eleanor McGall, Cole Rubio, Josh Udelson, Emerson Blair, Cassidy Herb, Hazel Hall, Liam Kaiser, David Comer, Ethan Sandusky, Mac Schoonerman, Max Wissionis, Joseph Warner, Emma Simo Francesina. Congratulations. Next, we're going to celebrate something that's new for Hauser this year. We've been, through our PBSS, we've been trying to find new ways to honor the students who show the Hauser Way and attack the day the Hauser Way. So, we have a new Student of the Month program. We have a lot of those Student of the Month people here, and so come on down. Alice Buckman, Liam Hickey, John Rico, Eddie Blomgren, Kyle Osga, Christina Malfarce, Emma Udelson, Emma Strong, there she is. We also have Samuel Maharas, Olivia Glave, Marco Malik, Ellie Christensen, Greta Stravani... Two teams, Greta, I'm so sorry, I owe you, Greta.
She was just practicing.
I swear I've been practicing that. Paulina Carmona, Natalie Colts, Gabriel Garza, and Gabriella Nolan. And the last group we'll celebrate this evening is our Word Masters Champions. And we have Liam Hickey.
It's another three-peat.
And Bennett Junanis. Congratulations.
Stay tuned for spring, when the crowd will be slightly larger. We'll have to think about our venue, because that's when all the elementary awards will also happen, so...
Thanks for all your hard work, students, we appreciate it.
Good job, everybody.
There's no Ames Awards tonight, I thought there might be spillover from that.
Right.
Yeah, never know.
I think it's a Christmas break thing.
All right, are we ready?
Yes, so, did you want to say anything more about the Student Achievement?
That was great, I mean, I always enjoy that.
Wonderful, and it's great to see so many people here. I know it turns much more exciting when we talk about our financial audit status, but this is something, there's been a delay this year, and so I just really wanted to share with the board, and really have Jim share with the board, Jim Fitton, our Director of Finance and Operations, just to give a brief update on that.
There was a delay this year due to some change in the requirements for the audit, and it affected all the districts in the state, actually. But late last night, we received our pre-draft, so I've been going through it today. We got, they need more feedback from us for input into the document, and we got probably 90% of it done today, and hope to wrap it up tomorrow, and hoping that the auditors will be ready to present to us at the February 6 meeting.
So, I have a question, so this was a delay based on the requirements that were set by the state?
Yeah, so there's a GAZB 75, and that was new this year, and it's a calculation has to be done for THIS, for the Teachers' Health Insurance, for future obligations. So, the TRS had an auditor coming and do it, and then they figure out how much is owed, and come up with a number for each district. And it was the first time they did it, and then they went, they made a mistake with it. So, they had to redo it all and get it out to everybody.
You say "they," it was...
The auditors that were hired by the TRS.
By the state, not the auditors that were hired by the district?
Correct.
Got it.
It was statewide.
Yep.
It affected everybody's.
And then, we had one other item related to our RFQ related to traffic engineering and the exterior related to our master plan, that you were going to give us an update on that.
So, we talked about it last time, but we published the RFQ on January 9, and there were two particular vendors that we made sure we emailed it to besides publishing in the paper. And we've had, well, those two in particular acknowledged they had it, and then we got several other who saw the publication, probably four or five more at this point. So, we sent them the information, and they've got to get back to us, the deadline's January 25. So, the hope is to, at the next facility meeting, we can discuss which vendor we would want to recommend, and hopefully have them present at the February 6 board meeting, too. So, it's going to be a big meeting.
Great, thank you.
Then I had just one other item on our superintendent's report, and that is to acknowledge Dr. Merrill Brownlow's resignation. And I told her, this is not her swan song, this is not her goodbye, she's got five more months of work. And certainly, but I do want to acknowledge, and actually Bob Skolnick did a lovely article in the Landmark yesterday, so I'm really addressing the many positive comments that we all want to share also. But really, the thing I wanted to cover, and we will say our fond farewells to Merrill another time, and thank her for all her wonderful accomplishments, but there'd also been a question about, you know, people are wondering how are we going to replace Merrill, and even though Merrill cannot be replaced, we are looking to post the position as a Director of Teaching and Learning for future applicants. And we do feel it's a highly desirable district and a highly desirable opportunity for a professional in the field, but wanted to share that. I know at the time when Merrill came on board as Assistant Superintendent, there was very much a time of transition for the district, and it seems to make sense now to identify the position as Director of Teaching and Learning, in keeping with Director of Special Education, Director of Finance and Operations, Director of Technology, that I think it's another, you know, wonderful compliment to our team and to the needs of the district, but to share that, as that being the goal, not really taking anything away from the work or from the position, but looking at, kind of, as we continue to build our team moving forward.
Thanks Martha, any other questions on any of these points? If not, then we move on to the consent agenda. At this point, would the Board Secretary like to read the consent agenda?
Sure. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of previous board meetings. Those were the closed session of December 19, two sets of minutes, regular business meeting on December 19, and the special meeting of January 8 of this year. The consent agenda also includes the personnel report, the Pabels' prelists of December 28 of last year, and January 16 of this year, a review of the closed session minutes, and that's it.
Thanks Joel. Is, are there any items that any board member would like taken off of the consent agenda for further discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
Margie, please hold the roll.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Clyber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks Margie. Next item is Riverside Education Council. Do we have any comments from Riverside Education Council? No? Then we come to board member comments. Does any board member have any thing they'd like to talk about, anything they've seen or done, plays or any of that? This is the last time we met, probably not, so no.
I'm just staying quiet, preparing our house for the RB transition. I have to say that the Hauser has done a good job, kind of letting us know what to expect, and it's been, it's been good.
Okay, then we move on to the committee reports. Rich, do you have anything to report in finance?
Nothing to report with respect to finance, but I would, I guess, like to just say about the balance of the agenda, you know, the Ames presentation that we're going through, that represents a lot of work that's happened over preceding 10 months and probably a little bit beyond that, and not just work by a few board members, but work by a really dedicated committee of volunteers, both from the administration, as well as those members in the community and those that are affected, specifically up at that area around Ames, teachers, many people have volunteered on this. So, I'm really excited that we're at this point today to roll out this information, because I feel strongly that our solution is right here, that we're going to see today, so I'm excited about this.
Thanks Rich. Again, do you have any, anything to report from Policy Committee?
Nothing from Policy, no.
Okay, and Sheri on Education?
No, we have had a little respite from our holiday times, we'll be back soon next month.
Sounds good, all right. We next move on to old business, and the only item on old business is the school calendar, which we talked about last, the last one. So, at this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the 2019-2020 school calendar as presented?
Still moved.
Does anyone have any comments or thoughts on the calendar they'd like to talk about?
I think it functions well. The last date was kind of like, oh my goodness, it's a different month, but it makes sense because of the ways that the month fall, and I think it looks reasonable.
Can we just highlight what the, so I was going through, just trying to see the changes from this year, this current year to the next year.
So, institute days.
And from what I can see, school starts on Wednesday as opposed to a Thursday.
Right.
So, one difference for our teaching staff is there are two institute days at the beginning of the school instead of three. We had had six institute days as a kind of a transitional opportunity, when the district was very much transitioning to the Common Core.
Right.
We had agreed, it's really what the state recommends in terms of a calendar, is to have four institute days, so those two be four, and then two during the school year. Trying to think what else stands out as a change, Merrill, are there other things that you want to...
I'm really minor, but it's a leave year, so that's also why you are on May 29 induction date.
Right, I think...
They also made it a little wonky with the ending date.
Yeah, ending in May, it makes it look like some change in heaven.
I think the school days are actually fine, so... Yeah, so it's two less institutes, and then you'll see there's no longer a January institute, so that gained a day in January for instruction. There's the possibility, if the instructional day that Mrs., that Dr. Ryan Toine mentioned last meeting, about, you know, the possibility that the instructional day could be less than five clock hours, that's now in litigation, and so we don't know yet for sure whether or not that will be repealed, and we'll go back to having five clock hours. So, for right now, everything looks exactly the same. The only other thing that, other than those two institute days, the only other thing that we discussed as a calendar committee is the possibility of the last day becoming a half day if that five clock hour does not get repealed. Because to have a full day on the very last day, especially at the middle school level, the calendar committee felt very strongly that by 3 o'clock, those kids are shutting down completely. So, but for right now, everything is remaining as it is, because we're anticipating that it's going to go back to the five hour clock.
I noticed that we also added, like, a conditional emergency day?
We did, we added two, actually. One is more likely than the other, so we...
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, President's Day is one that could become a conditional...
Yeah, I was wondering about if it's a better holiday, does it...
Yeah, and the calendar committee discussed the possibility of the morning of Good Friday, but that would have to be a board discussion if we got to that point, because teacher absences, it's a vacation weekend.
It'd be hard for families, too.
Yeah, we weren't, yeah, we weren't sure, but we wanted to put it down there as the potential, because if the five clock hour day doesn't get repealed, then that could be a half day. We didn't like it as a full conditional day, but as a half conditional day, it was maybe potentially something we could utilize. Again, as you get to emergency days and you look at what happens, if we had only one, we would only want to use one conditional. Once we get to two, the calendar committee felt strongly, just go into your regular emergency days.
So, that's kind of... No.
Right, and that's kind of following what RB did this year.
Correct.
Right.
But we wanted to have a second contingency there, just in case you had an emergency day in February.
So typically, you tack five on at the end of the school year, but, you know, school districts are starting to say, well, maybe if we took a holiday, you know, like President's Day holiday or something. Especially with this sort of neatly ending on a Friday.
On a Friday, yeah.
It made some sense to insert that conditional day, and maybe the second one.
Yeah, the Good Friday one's the only one, I think you'll get some pushback from.
Yeah.
And that's a decision you can make at that time, so we wanted to put them in there on the front end, and you don't need to use contingency days, but they're there if you do choose to.
I like that we're still doing an evening option for conferences and a full day.
Yeah.
I think that covers pretty much everybody.
Any other thoughts on the calendar? If not, then Margie, please hold the roll.
Ms. Clyber?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks Margie. We now move on to new business, so the first item in new business is the summer school memo. Martha, would you like to tell us what's...
Sure, so summer school has really followed a similar format for the past several years. Kim Hefter, ex, is our summer school principal, and works with Dr. Brownlow to coordinate all of this. We offer both enrichment classes, as well as what we call skill building classes, so children are sometimes recommended for specific skill building opportunities to come back to the school during the summer, and that's been a successful model for us. So, some of the examples of the classes are listed here, and really, it's an opportunity for teachers to really address some of their passions, projects, hobbies, and provide opportunities for students across a variety of topic areas. And again, if they don't fill, we don't run the classes, but to offer children some unique opportunities for summer has been, again, a nice model for District 96 to have in place. But at this point, the most important thing, we really want to make sure is we can get the dates out there, for the board to consider the dates. In the future, I think I'll just insert those dates also on our calendar, and we can do these two things simultaneously. We also, the fees are listed here, but we are going to do a review of all our school fees at next month, so we can also take an additional look at summer school fees at that time, too. I don't know, Merrill, if there's more you want to add about summer school, or if the board has other questions?
Awesome, because there's no real changes to the model from last year. We made some significant changes last year when we went to the 60, 120, 180, rather than just 90s and 180s, and that was very successful for us, we had a much higher enrollment, and so...
And a four-day...
Yeah, and a four-day week.
Much better for people.
We had much more consistent enrollment and higher enrollment, so we didn't look to change much going into this next year, because it seemed to work well.
Do you want to have any questions about the summer school?
No, I just know Kim does a great job. Like, my daughter did the robotics one here, and she was, she was walking around the building, she checked it out, even though she had other things to do, she peaked, she's on top of stuff, because she's got the two buildings to worry about at once, and she did a great job.
I did have a question about the one note where it says that kids who are not enrolled in District 96 may attend summer school with a 20% additional fee. I guess I'm wondering where that came from, is that an arbitrary number, or is there rationale behind that?
Do you want to speak to that? That's somewhat the story.
That was in place prior to us all arriving, for students that aren't paying fees during the regular school year. We do order supplies and materials from our budget, and we budget for summer school. And so, our summer school supply budget is typically budgeted from our regular dollar, so if we have unanticipated enrollment from students outside of the district, that's basically to cover the supplies. I don't know how it was originally derived, I can't speak to that, because it was in place before I took it, took it on.
But is something that, for 20%, does that realistically cover those?
Yeah, it does, because the summer school period of time is four weeks. You know, the only, we, we level it out, we don't do it as a per class enrollment, because it would be really hard to predetermine by class what that would look like. Robotics was new last year, and we didn't have any outside enrollments relative to robotics, that would be the most expensive course that we host. But beyond that, everything's pretty equitable in terms of what we're utilizing, and they don't enroll in our skill building classes, only in our enrichment.
And so, that would be applicable as well, so it sounds like that we've had in the past, kids from outside the district, not necessarily somebody who lives in the district but doesn't attend District 96 schools, like some St. Mary's or something like that.
Yeah, no, we haven't had any inquiries at, to this point. Yeah, if they were taxpayers here, then that's, you know, that's a question we would probably have to...
And it is something we could put on our analysis of fees.
Exactly.
Jim Fitton's been looking at more comprehensively, so maybe that's something we should put on our list, if that's something that the board has questions, or would others like to take a look at that? Again, it's one of those things that...
It probably would make sense to talk about, to your point, Dan, a taxpayer with kids who just not enrolled in public school versus someone in Berwyn wanting to access.
It'd be interesting to know how many kids we actually have that do that.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would think it would be small.
Yeah, I don't even know if we had any last year that I know off the top of my head, but I can recheck the enrollments.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dr. Brownlow. Any other questions on the summer school? All right, then we move on to the second item, which is the long-range facility overview presentation. This is part one, the Ames School Design Ideas Presentation. There'll be a second presentation, I think in February 6, we'll talk about Central Hollywood and Blythe, but this is the first of the two, and so, looking forward to see what you guys have working on.
So, I'm going to get us started, but I'm going to start quickly by introducing our committee, as Rich alluded to earlier, a group that's done a lot of work here. So, I think this is a long-awaited, long-range facilities plan update, thanks to those of you who are joining us, I know some people have been asking lots of questions for a while now, and as Rich said, this has been a process that we've been engaged in. We actually looked at two years, 20, over 20 meetings and over 40 hours worth of meetings, where their meetings were often two hours long. So, what we really want to share with all of you tonight are responses to really three simple questions, is how did this whole thing get started, what have we accomplished, and where are we going? And really, before I can really talk about how we got started, what I really need to do next is to introduce all the members of the District 96 Facility Advisory Committee. They're all here tonight, and they're actually going to be part of this presentation. So, really, special thanks goes first and foremost to Linda Murphy and Rich Regan, who joined us as our two board members on the committee, and again, put in a lot of hours as board members, and then a lot of additional hours on our Facility Advisory Committee. So, really helping us make sure that the voice of the board was heard loud and clear in our committee process, and making sure that we had plenty of back and forth opportunity to make sure that the full board was engaged, but also having that opportunity to have kind of those more nimble and small group conversations through the committee process. Jim Fitton also joined us as our Director of Finance and Operations, I say facilities, it certainly feels like facilities through some of this work. So, he joined us this summer and really jumped in quickly and got up to speed on all of the important work here in the process. Merrill Brownlow, who you've heard from already tonight, joined us. Pam Shaw, Director of Special Education, Don Tofano, our Director of Technology and Innovation, Bill Radke, who has joined us here tonight also, he starts work here, I think, at 5:00 a.m., gets up at 3:00, so this is a long day for him, but thank you, Bill, for being here. Jason Smith, our Instructional Technology Coordinator, and Todd Gierman, our Principal at Ames Elementary School, given that this work was primarily focused on our work at Ames this time around, but you're going to continue to see how we will be adding in our other principals, and have been sort of informally and through focus groups along the way. So, really, a lot of thank you to this committee, to this group, it has been an exciting process. We are not finished, in some ways I feel like we are just getting started, but again, the work will continue on, but there has been a lot of heavy lifting behind the scenes moving this process forward. So, really, in terms of where did it all get started, there was a strategic plan that was developed during the 2015-2016 school year, and the strategic plan process very much engaged the community in identifying the big ideas and the important goals that felt most pressing and important to, really, the entire District 96 community. And there were very key goals around our facilities work. So, one was to optimize and reconfigure our existing space to address the needs of the school district. So, it was, again, to look at potential locations for district office, to consider possible locations for full-day kindergarten, or what impact that would have on our facilities, and to just look at other opportunities to renovate and increase space. We also wanted to look at improving the safety and accessibility and appropriateness of outside play and learning areas. So, there was a playground review committee, some of you that committee met in the 2015-2016 school year, and really, we decided that kind of all the jigsaw piece, puzzle pieces, we needed to kind of take that broader lens and take a look at really outdoor learning, play, our parking, and our facilities in a more global way. So, for the time being, we really put that playground review committee on hold and took all of it into consideration as part of our Facility Advisory Committee. In September of 2017, we sent out a survey to the full community, we received 214 responses, which we felt was a high degree of response from the community, and people really shared a lot of ideas in response to these three key questions that you can look at here, I don't necessarily need to read them to all of you, but really asking about, you know, are facilities adequate, what do our facilities really feel like, what is the experience that our children are really having, and not just our children, but our staff, and how does it feel to, to teach in the facilities that we currently have? So, that was really helpful as a first step for us in terms of gathering community feedback. Then on October 16, back in 2017, we had a master facility planning meeting, so some of you in the room were at that meeting. It was still very preliminary, we were looking at, really trying to understand our needs, getting a sense of priority, what felt most pressing and what felt most important. So, that was another way that we worked with the community. The other thing, simultaneously, so a lot of these things kind of happened hand in hand, we worked with a demographer that has done demographic studies here in District 96 before, but really wanted to have a handle on our enrollments, obviously, as we look at facilities, what are our needs. So, what you kind of get a quick picture of there is that we know that we've had a very steady increase in enrollment here in District 96, and not a lot of big changes in our facilities. So, you know, some space was updated, and some small group learning spaces were captured in some of our buildings in the 2011-2012 time period, you see that the enrollment sort of continued to go up and up and up, and our facilities stayed pretty much the same. The projections are always interesting with a demographer and the projections, we might continue to go up, we might go a little bit down, or we might stay pretty stable. But we do know that this idea that we still need to address some of our past growth, and that even considering future growth is, is important. and that even considering future growth is important to our process. The next thing we did is we hired DLA as our architecture firm. So the board remembers, meeting with several different architecture firms, and DLA was the firm that we chose to really be our partner and our advisor and bring us the professional expertise that we need from architects. So we hired Carrie Matlock, who's now the President of DLA. And I'm going to have Carrie kind of jump in here next and share a little bit about the work that they did.
Thank you. And as you might have remembered in previous presentations that I've spoken with the board, our design philosophy is form follows learning. And what that means is we truly believe the architecture of a school building should support and inspire learning. And so what we did here to begin our process was a deep dive into understanding Ames and understanding the issues that the students, the teachers, and the principals were dealing with there. That took some time, and as was already mentioned, it was a pretty arduous process. And Todd Gierman, principal there, is going to tell us a little bit more about that now. And, because he's lived it, breathed it, and it's only the beginning.
Woken up in a cold, sweaty night about it. It's all good. Let's see here. Good evening, District 96 Board of Education, Superintendent Ryan Toye. Yes, I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the Ames Visioning Committee. I was invited to join the Facility Advisories Committee that Dr. Ryan Toye spoke of earlier, probably around March, I want to say, of 2018. And shortly thereafter, we decided to form the Ames Visioning Committee, and that was April of 2018. And I remember, still remember Carrie talking to Martha going, "We need to do this." And Martha calling me, saying, "We're going to do this, and we're going to get the teachers to do on the month of May. At the end of the school year, we want four three-hour meetings. Look at your calendar." It got to the end of the day to get back to me. And we made it work. We made it work. So we put together a committee at Ames. And on that committee, well, what you're going to see on the left is the Facility Advisory Committee, and then on the right is the Ames staff that joined us. We have David Becker, who's a first-grade teacher, myself, Christina Guzala, who's a kindergarten teacher, Sarah Hickey, second grade, Jane Lordson, a music teacher, Danielle Munson, third grade, Caitlin Rogers is a special ed resource teacher, Amy Wright is a fifth-grade teacher, or Jeff Weidra is a fourth-grade teacher. So we had representation from every single grade level, in addition to the specials, which would be art, music, PE, that was Mrs. Lordson, and also specialists, we would call, which was Caitlin Rogers, our special education resource teacher. So there's the meetings that we put in our calendar. We had a meeting on April 27th, May 9th, May 18th. We took a building tour at Kennedy Elementary. May 23rd and May 29th, we also had meetings as well. So what we really, to give you an idea of what we did, the District 96 leadership team and our architect, when we decided to form this committee, we wanted to begin the process of addressing the future needs of Ames Elementary School. So we did have these meetings throughout the end of 2018 to start talking about that. And we really did a deep dive into where is Ames at? Where do we want to be? And pretty much, how are we going to get there? So it was a pretty cool, we had some really interesting brainstorming sessions. So the committee worked together to come up with a vision of Ames as we undergo these improvements to our current facility and campus. Some of you might be wondering, and in the audience especially, what is educational visioning? And Carrie, to talk a little bit about that. It's a team of architects at DLA, wanted to ensure that our educational philosophy guides the design of our new learning spaces at Ames and inspires learning. The Ames Visioning Committee was given the task to create designs that not only met current needs, but are able to forecast and prepare for the future needs of our students and staff at Ames. It was a very, very robust process to identify the current and future needs. The items we needed to address were the following. Ames recently became a three-section school, and as soon as we did that, we have, what that means for people that don't know, there's three sections of kindergarten. There is 2:00 AM and 1:00 PM, and then there's three sections of first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. And when we did that, we took away our multipurpose room and made it into art and music room. And it's working, but it got pretty tight. So we need to look at our current space constraints. We also wanted to talk about shared office spaces. For instance, our social worker shares an office space with our speech pathologist, and there's other people that share spaces as well. Teachers working with students in the hallways due to lack of space. Now granted, will you see that in other schools? Absolutely, but we do it a little bit more than other schools because of space. The loss of our multipurpose room, which I spoke of earlier, and that was because it was converted to an art and music room. Lunch being held in the gym, which is not necessarily ideal, because we lost our lunchroom and we lost our multipurpose room, because that's what it was acting as, in addition to large group learning space. So that created some nuances in our schedule, but, you know, we overcome those, because we work together as a team at Ames. The creation of spaces for special programs such as advanced learners and special need students. We have some classes that are taking place in what's about the size of a walk-in closet. So it's, those are not the best learning environments for students. Students playing on the blacktop in a parking lot with cars. Enough said there. That explains itself. More space needed for itinerant staff members, which would be specialists, you're looking at social workers, psychologists, speech pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. So we identified all these needs, and then we discussed some plans how to address these needs with the students and staff. And then we had to narrow that list down. Carrie, you really did, when I read this, I really did do a lot. So what are the...
And it was fun.
It was fun. It was a blast. I left that out. It was a lot of fun. It really was. So we narrowed it down to, you know, what do we really need? A place to eat, and a complete, large, grade-level group learning space, which we call a multipurpose room. Renovation of our current library to meet the needs of our students and educational programming at Ames. Solving spaces for teachers, get them off stages, working on the stage in the gym, get them out of the hallways, and separate planned parking. So we went through these great meetings, and at the end of it, the team was most excited for these following areas, and I felt they were important enough to highlight. Creating a building with adequate spaces, a school that will benefit our larger population of students, a multipurpose room that serves as a place to eat, and complete large group projects, more space with the media center, which is our library, creating an outdoor green space with a playground that is separate from cars in the parking lot, flexibility and inclusive learning spaces for teachers and students, more efficient drop-off and pickup procedures, parking spaces for our staff and families, and storage to get items out of the hallways. And I personally am most excited with creating this inclusive learning environment that meets the needs of all students. We do that every day, but this environment will make it even better. If you want to know more about the Ames Visioning Committee, there's, this is on our district website, and you can look at it. And I will compliment DLA Architects and Carrie, the president. What an amazing job. It's worth looking at. It really takes you through the robust process that we did. At this time, I'm going to introduce to you Mr. Jason Smith, who is our Instructional Technology Coordinator here in District 96.
Thanks. So we talked about where do we start, and now we're going to start to talk about what have we accomplished. And I think Rich made a good point, and Martha brought it up as well. There's a lot of time that we spent together, from morning meetings to after-school, into the evening meetings, working with the teachers. And I feel like in the time that we were together, we did accomplish a lot. And hopefully, you'll see that as well in this presentation. Todd covered a lot of information about Ames, and we also talked a lot, though, about District 96 in general with the facilities. So not only did we speak about Ames, we'd kind of then veer off and start talking about how does that impact Blythe? We then would talk about how does that impact Central, and then Hollywood as well. So as an advisory committee, we really started taking a look at how can we solve some district-wide potential issues? So in the future, we're not talking about, like, short-term always, but long-term, as we look into the future, how can we solve those issues that we're facing? A lot of it deals with space, but then it's also just providing that equal opportunity for all students to learn and have a great opportunity to be successful in school. We started looking at, as Todd mentioned, how the three sections needed at Ames is impacting the space at that school. And then how did the additional properties that were purchased allow us to look at our design and potential future plans? And then what was mentioned also is looking at the priorities, and it's going to be kind of just that repeat, but the security. So Ames does have a secured front office. How's there as a secured front office? We started taking a look at secured front offices. How can we keep our students safe, our teachers safe? How can we know who is in the building? How can we control that front office and main entrance? Separation of planned parking is a common issue that we're looking at district-wide. Not only is that planned parking happening where cars are parked and play is taking place at Ames, but we see that at all schools. And then also that place to eat, large group projects for the multipurpose room, reconfiguring and updating libraries. We're going to talk about a shift in learning spaces in a little bit. Just how can we provide a space where students can explore, have some inquiry-based units? How can they create and collaborate together? And then, as Todd mentioned, the adequate educational spaces for all. So as a group, we started prioritizing our needs. And again, you'll see the same common themes that kept on coming up. Every time we had a conversation, we kept on coming back up to the same topics. And so on that list, some of them you'll see reached that strategic plan that Martha mentioned earlier, looking at appropriate number of classrooms. If we ever do get to that point with full-day kindergarten in our conversations, we'll be prepared in the future for that. Looking at the programming needs, looking at large group learning spaces. In the designs that Carrie and DLA put together, you'll see large group flexible learning spaces. Alleviate overcrowding at all schools. Pam and Meryl will be talking about that, of how we can potentially solve one issue that will solve issues elsewhere for us. And then Pam will talk about our stable, finding a stable location, hopefully, for our early learners.
So as Jason just mentioned, as we went through this process, one of the things that we talked about was that as the district has grown and expanded, and there's been a need for classrooms in different buildings, as things change in each building, this has created an instability, often in our early learner program. And so one of the things that we talked about was finding a permanent and stable location for the program. As some of you may know, that school districts are required to provide a continuum of services for our young children with special needs, three to five, just as they are kindergarten through age 22. And so that requires us to have general education students for preschoolers. And school districts, as you know, preschool is not mandated. But through the early learners program, we have created that continuum of services. In 2014, District 96 established the early learner program, and that gives the members of District 96's families the opportunity to enroll their child, paying tuition, to attend a quality preschool program. And in turn, that provides general education students for our students with special needs. And the program has, over the past few years, consisted of three classrooms, and due to the related service providers and the young age of the students and the paraprofessionals, it can be anywhere between 12 to 14 staff members who are providing instruction, related services, and supports to the children. So over the years, in the history of, as we've looked back, the early childhood program or the early learners program, as it became in 2014, has moved between all four of the elementary buildings, from what we understand. And we really feel it's important that we find a permanent location for the program in order to have some stability for it.
Thanks, Pam. So in looking at all the work of the Facilities Committee, as Pam mentioned and Jason mentioned, we were looking at a district-level view, not just an Ames view. But some of the things that we knew we could solve district-wide with looking at Ames were potential overcrowding at other schools. So particularly, if the early learners can find a permanent home over at Ames, that would open up space at Blythe, which could alleviate overcrowding at Central. So it's like a big game of dominoes. But that truthfully, if we could make some of those adjustments in these larger plans, we could create some real benefits for all our students. And some of those student learning benefits, if we open up some space at Blythe to alleviate overcrowding at Central, would be that we can increase the population at Blythe in various ways. We could add additional classrooms and sections there. So there could be two sections at various grade levels over time, and students would really benefit from increased collaborative opportunities and different student groupings by being able to absorb some of the crowdedness of Central, which we've started to do this year in kindergarten. And it's a beautiful thing. We have two sections of kindergarten over there now. Also, with being able to bring more classrooms over to Blythe, that also increases our opportunities for collaboration for teachers, obviously. If we put more classrooms, we get more staff. And the research is out there, that whenever we can build those collaborative opportunities into a system, it's going to benefit students, but also teachers, which then turns around and has a positive impact on kids. So with some of the things we can do at Ames, we can solve some of those wider district issues that we are having with enrollment across our system. So we're excited about that. Oh, yep. And then, learning spaces for all. Pam and I are going to tag-team this one. You heard Mr. Gierman mention the fact that we have lots of shared spaces going on in our buildings. And this is true, when he mentioned the storage closet, that's where our kindergarten intervention program sits at Ames. And we make it work, because they're little people, but it would be really nice if they had a more adequate space where we could do more with them than the space they're currently in. Same thing for, if you've walked the halls at Ames and even some of our other schools, you'll see that interventions like math and reading interventionists, as well as our second-language learners, their spaces are very tiny. And even though they have small groups, when you put eight students into a small-group space, suddenly, it's even smaller. And so really being able to open up some of those spaces where those small groups of students have adequate spaces, and they can have their visual references and resources hanging on the walls, and have that space be a place where they can actually access their learning in more ways than just at the tabletop in a confined space. So that would really help with all those intervention programs that we offer. And I see our second-language learning teacher over there shaking her head, because I've walked by her room, and she can have, you know, six to eight kids, and I have to crawl over them when I walk in and visit. So it would be nice for them to have a more adequate space.
And with special education, looking at learning spaces for those students, too. We not only have special education teachers, but we have related service providers, such as physical therapists, occupational therapists, speech and language therapists, psychologists, and social workers at all of our buildings. And they're providing supports and services and instruction to students. And as Mr. Gierman mentioned, for example, at Ames, we have a social worker and a speech and language pathologist sharing the same room, which is a bit of a scheduling nightmare at times, as you may have one of them trying to provide services, the other one may be trying to assess, they may be both trying to provide services, and both those services, it's unrealistic for them to be happening in the same space. So they're having to find another location, which does not then lend for optimal instruction and services to our students to support them with what they need.
All right, so we talked about how we got started, what we have accomplished, and now where are we going? So I think this is probably the part that people are most excited about. All the hours, all the meetings, all the discussions we had, where has that led us to? And I think Carrie did a great job with her team to always bring our attention back to the user in mind, and who are we planning for? Who are we always meeting for? And that was for our students. So as a staff, we had all these ideas. Even visiting, we threw different ideas on the wall about what we found on, whether we Pinterest or Google or on the site visit. But the main thing that has always stuck was what we had in mind for our students. Can we provide a quality education in this new environment that was renovated, that was added on? So the plan, always moving forward, is what's best for the students of Riverside, District 96. So a shift in our learning space. This is not to be rude at all, but they are two pictures of Blythe from the 1950s. I love the photos. And maybe we see classrooms like this today. I thought they were pretty progressive on the left-hand side, sitting two to the desk. They were probably screwed down to the floor, though. But in our learning spaces, we want to look at a shift. And so how can we provide a learning space, again, centered on student learning? How can we provide spaces within our school that allows for collaboration, for creation? In the plans that Carrie will talk about, you will not see a ton of details, but there's a few things we just wanted to talk about regarding this shift. One of them is large, flexible learning space. So in the hallway by classrooms, you might see this large, flexible area. That flexible area can be used for multiple classes that come together. It could be used for one class, where a teacher can take their students out into the hallway, promote movement, engagement, and allow students to be active in their learning, and also allow them to collaborate, like I said, with potential other classes. The multipurpose room would also be another large, flexible learning space. Not only would be providing a space for lunch, but it'd also be a space that teachers can take their class into, grade levels can go into it as well, and have this common area that they can join. You'll also see on the plan, small, smaller learning spaces, and Todd talked about that. And so how can we have, provide an area for that learning to take place? But then also, we mentioned earlier, updating those libraries, it'll be a larger space than they're used to at Ames, according to the plans or some of the options. And that larger space, again, movement, collaboration, creation, some inquiry where students can kind of get in there and do more than potentially just check out books, where it's another learning opportunity for them.
The plans that we're going to begin to look at are conceptual. And what I mean by that is there are not a lot of details. The doors are not in exact locations. Sometimes doors are not shown. There will be square footages allocated to some of these spaces. And those square footages may change in the future because infrastructure improvements that are required as part of the addition or renovation will be eaten away at that square footage. But for now, it's a starting point. And this is pretty typical of what the type of drawing that you would look at at this juncture. The next phase, we'll get a lot more detail, and we'll talk about that as we move forward. But just so everyone understands the plans that you're about to look at. And they will be a little small, so we'll try and keep them explained well enough so that you can understand the spaces that are shown.
So, the idea is we're going to, like, agree on a concept, and that next phase, where all the details come in, will be on this one concept. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Right. So, we'll get much more in-depth, be able to get more feedback.
Correct.
Once we have a concept. Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Typical percentage for the infrastructure placement, square footage reductions, that's typical.
It really is going to depend on a lot of things, the size of the addition and the capacity. So, that egress is going to be a little bit wider for the larger additions versus the smaller ones. And then, once we get into the design of the mechanical system, but, you know, I could tell you that it could be anywhere, you know, circulation and functional space could be 35 to 40 percent of that. But it all depends just upon the layout that you select.
Also, we did provide hard copies of the drawings. They're over there at the sign-in table, right? If that's helpful to people to have something on their hands.
And after each concept, we're going to talk about the pros and cons of each, and Don's going to explain that.
So, the listing of needs that we provided here, I'm not going to read through them. Actually, we've covered them throughout this presentation. We're going to continue to go back to them. But it's really a listing of the needs that we've identified through the stakeholder engagement process of the planning committee. And it was used by the committee to help us evaluate each of the design options that we're going to be presenting. Carrie's going to be reviewing each of those designs in more detail, but we'll be utilizing this list of needs in order to provide more of a visual summary of the strengths of each option.
So, this first option is a very efficient plan and hits some of the points that Todd mentioned earlier. It separates parking and play and incorporates the two properties that the Repton and the Loudon property. So, it increases the site a great deal by utilizing those and our options. By incorporating them into that, we are allowed to increase our buildable area, which is nice, because we're at maximum right now. The addition is on the back of the building, which is also a nice attribute of this plan, considering it keeps the facade of the building alone and intact as the way it was anticipated to be within the community, and less community impact from the front of the building. An additional parking that is then separated from the building and play is created back here with a circulation route of this. So, which is nice, because that safety can happen then. That is in place and separating these areas, which is both a hard and a soft surface play What we did on the back of the building was add an addition, believe it's approximately 5,000 square feet. And the library space, that kind of housed a number of functions, got relocated to this addition, and we regained that space as classroom. We attached a multipurpose room for dining and then some small group rooms as well, which became a flexible space, and then also some type of vestibule area, which we'll have to remodel the existing stairwell there in order to accommodate that change. And that's pretty much the essence of this first plan.
It's important to note that that's a single-story addition as well.
That is a single-story addition, correct. It's a little bit larger view, and you can see the attributes that it's adding. The library has increased in size. There's an additional classroom, but really, when you look at the small group and the large group, those are educational spaces as well. And the names of these can change. It's really versatile space that is being provided.
And the current library is on this, is where?
Current library is right here.
It's on the first floor.
And actually, it gets divided into a classroom and then a small group learning space, as it gets relocated to the back addition.
So, this proposal is not accommodating early learners moving over, right?
No, it is not.
This one kind of takes that basic list of needs and addresses them.
And as we already discussed, the parking and outdoor play are separated.
Oh, yeah. Here we go. Sorry. I was ahead of ourselves here. Here's a checklist.
So, option one of the list that we had put together addresses about half the needs. It adds about 5,100, 5,100 square feet at a cost of 4.75, 5.1 million.
Any questions on that option? Moving forward.
Well, I'll just state one thing that I don't. There's still a classroom on the second floor that doesn't have a window.
That is correct.
So, if, for some reason, we were going with this option, I think that's something that would have to be addressed, because I don't think that's suitable. Moving forward.
The second proposal, number two, is basically the same footprint, but then we add a second floor to it. And there is some additional remodeling. So, we'll talk about what that looks like a little closer. That same classroom that was just mentioned, that does not have any windows, is now reallocated to small group with an expanded music area.
It's also talking about that other room on the second floor, or maybe not the second floor.
Yeah. There was two in the first, one in the second.
So, then the library space is also then reclaimed with that small group, like was previously mentioned. And the overall square footage of this addition is 8,900 square feet. The multipurpose room and the art classroom are in the back, along with a large group flex learning area. Again, there may be some circulation and smaller rooms that might accommodate mechanical in the future. That still needs to be vetted out exactly what those look like, but that's, a lot of that, some of those spaces are articulated here, some. And then, this is the second floor, and that does still exist, that other classroom. The library is on the second floor. This is actually a larger library than the previous scheme. And then, two classrooms flank that space. So, for a total of three new traditionally sized classrooms, and then various small group and large group learning spaces.
I know you said the details are not yet included in these schematics, but like, so if I look at the library here in this plan you just talked about, it looks like to get to these classrooms, you kind of, do you have to walk through the library? Is that, I mean?
That's what I was going to ask. Like, can these, can these bedrooms?
Right. And that could be a corridor that goes back to there later, and it could be reconfigured that the library gets cornered in the classroom. Right now, it's just an allocation of space.
Yeah, I was wondering.
Which is what? Good question.
From this quiet space and people coming through to get to where they're going.
Good question, although that has been designed like that at other locations. So, there.
Yeah, no, I realize that, yeah.
Yeah, the building we toured in Shiller Park, their library felt, it was very open, and it, like, the corridor of the library was built into the space with classrooms, and it felt, it felt very useful and, like, really maximizing the space.
I went to a high school like that.
Yeah. It's called a learning corridor. So, you know, those are refinements that will take place as we move forward and vet that out a little bit more, what we want to accomplish there.
And say, say in a design like this, that second floor classroom, that's interior, can become something else? Like, if that's a strong viewpoint of the board and the community, those can be split in half and become itinerant spaces or small group learning. And the classroom where kids are spending their full day could be moved somewhere else, right? So, there is a possibility of this.
Correct. Absolutely. There's a possibility for all of that.
Yeah.
Yep. And then, again, separation of parking and play takes place here as well. And I think we fit about 44 parking spots on there now. The requirement, the zoning requirements will vary depending upon the size of the addition, so we'll have to work within those constraints, depending on which addition is selected. Some may be less than 44.
So, the design option between one and two, they're essentially addressing a lot of the same needs, but it does add a second floor, increases overall square footage, provides additional classrooms and larger instructional spaces of those areas. Does provide additional itinerant space, and it leaves room for growth in the event of increased enrollment. In terms of square footage, as Carrie had said, it's 8,900 square feet, and it's at a cost of 6.28 to 6.8 million.
Proposal number three is a little bit larger of an addition, but similar in configuration, still on the back of the building, but it has increased in size with a little bit more So, again, the same attributes that we talked about on the first floor of the previous concept, with music getting a little bit larger, two small group rooms, the library being relocated upstairs, and another small group room being added. A multipurpose room off the backside of the gymnasium, a large group flex learning area. But this concept incorporates three pre-K classrooms. Obviously, those pre-classrooms would most likely have toilet rooms inside of them, so that's not articulated in this scheme, but it is intended.
That's planned and that's accounted for in the cost estimate?
Sure.
It makes sense. I mean, to travel those little people around is difficult.
And then, the same remodeling would be required of that stairwell, and there would
obviously be an elevator that's needed for this as well. The square footage of this addition is 14,000 square feet. The second floor, the renovation that changes, is that this art room gets expanded and two small group rooms. So, we do eliminate that other classroom without the natural light that comes in. Again, upstairs is a small group flex learning. This time, the library is configured off to the side, could be enclosed, or could be open. And then, traditional-sized classrooms and some small group flexible learning areas, as well as some mechanical. At this point, we understand that there's most likely going to be a larger mechanical room with this size of an addition, so we're allocating it here just to kind of get an idea of square footage.
Are they usually noisy?
This is just going to be additional boilers, because the boiler.
So, it's not, yeah, I was just wondering if it's noisy if you put it next to a classroom, is that going to impact them? And I know you can soundproof, but I was just curious.
Yes, we would, obviously.
Because we had that conversation about the Hauser elevator.
Sure.
Mechanical.
So, we will make sure that that does not impact education.
Yeah, just so it doesn't, next to a giant system in there.
Here again, same concept with the parking in back and that drive. The nice part of this is that it's keeping it within context of your community. The community is already aware of a parking lot that exists there, and so, it is the same. It's really repeating exactly what already exists, which is good when we go through zoning with the village.
Right.
So, option three, it checks all the boxes. So, we pick up the areas for all existing itinerants and student support areas. alleviates overcrowding across all schools. It creates a multi-section option for Blythe Park, and it allows for the movement of the early learners program from Blythe to Ames. As Carrie had said, it adds 14,000 square feet and at an estimated construction cost of 8.28 to 9 million dollars.
This last proposal, the addition is in two different locations, one in the front of the building and one in the back. And it is two stories. So, it's the largest of all of the proposals so far. As we look at the first floor, it incorporates the pre-K classrooms in the front of the building, which is nice, because they are adjacent to the other classrooms. And then, it puts the multipurpose room and a large group learning in the back. So, from that aspect, that's a pretty nice arrangement functionally. There's also a large group flex learning area and some small group flex learning areas. There's also a separate entrance for that pre-K. Now, the benefit of the previous concept with the pre-K in the back is that there could be a separate drop-off for that, which I neglected to mention. However, up here, that drop-off would still coincide with the remainder of the school, which might be a traffic, something that we need to work out.
Can I ask a question about timing? What's the time difference for pre-K versus a regular school day? Do they start at the same time?
It's altered. It's staggered.
It's staggered.
15 minutes?
15? Okay. Thank you.
We're still eliminating all the classroom with the large classroom with the not access to natural light and the music. And the library space, like we talked about in previous concepts, this time, we have to renovate that existing stairwell in order to accommodate passage to that other side, that addition. The second floor, the library is on the second floor in the back, and then, three additional classrooms over here, with some small group learning and a large flexible area. Again, what's nice about this concept is that the classrooms are adjacent to the remainder of the classrooms on that second floor. So, from a collaboration standpoint, that might be a benefit to Ames staff.
Is the placement of the classrooms in version four, option four, pretty much the most significant benefit to the option four layout?
I think so. There's also the benefit that, well, let's look at the site to talk about that a little bit.
Okay.
I do think that is the advantage. I don't know if any other committee members want to chime in with anything else they can think of related to that.
They look pretty significant in size compared to the existing classroom.
I also think that one of the benefits of option four was the multipurpose room and a large flex group learning space. You can see, like, there's a kind of a dotted line that could become like a larger community space where, I don't know exactly what would happen there, but like, programs or, you know, Veterans Day or something. So, yeah, I think the idea of that room was to create a larger space that could be opened up for maybe an all-school assembly or, you know. To me, that seems like the, one of the major benefits of this one. I do think it's nice having the pre-K in their own area, but I do also think drop-off at that location might be difficult. So.
One of the challenges with this concept is the parking and separating parking and outdoor play.
So, yeah, I think the idea of that room was to create a larger space that could be opened up for maybe an all-school assembly or, you know. To me, that seems like the, one of the major benefits of this one. I, I do think it's nice having the pre-K in their own area, but I do also think drop-off at that location might be difficult. So-
One of the, one of the challenges with this concept is the parking and separating parking and outdoor play. So everything becomes a little bit more linear in getting the backside of here, but we then become a little cramped with trying to grab that additional parking. And so we'd have to study that a little bit further to see that balance, because that's what we'd give. It would be, because we are now covering more floor area on the site versus the other concept where it's a more efficient double-stacked solution.
I did wonder about that. That seems a quite significant difference between the other plans and this one. There's no parking in the back and it assumes the diagonal parking in the front. I don't think any of the other plans do.
Right.
Right. And the facade, the symmetry of the facade is altered.
Right.
Obviously with the new property, which is a huge visual difference.
I'm sorry, I'll go back to my point though. So it's, it sounds encouraging to me that you're saying that there possibly could be some parking in the back there where there's currently empty space now, or just grass.
Right. Right. I mean, we could certainly make it a mix of whatever it would take to meet that. But again, this is the largest addition, and the larger the addition, the more parking we're going to be required to do onsite. So we'll have to work with the village to see what will be acceptable.
But that's not entirely true, because we can negotiate with the village with regards to what we really need for parking versus the zoning requirements.
Well, what their zoning requirements say are just, just a specific requirement based upon the amount of classrooms.
Yes, and we can go in and say, this is what we really need and this is what we're providing.
We're gonna have to go for a variance anyway, regardless of all of this, so the conversation will have to be had.
Multiple variances, I see, on this one. Yeah.
It's a special use variance that we would be submitting for originally, and then anything else that we would-
So in this plan as well, it looks like this is the only plan, or, well, the only plan when there's a second floor involved where there's open roof space for some, so I wondered, yeah. Is there a reason why we chose not to take advantage of all that space for the second floor?
We could. We definitely could. The reason why we didn't is because the pre-K is on the first floor, which are a larger, take up a larger area because they have washrooms incorporated into there, and typically they are designed with more square footage. If that wasn't the case, then we could just, then these are not those sized classrooms. They're smaller. So it could be another small group area, or it could be that those classrooms get built the same size as all the other classrooms. That's completely up to the district.
Would it ever be allowed to do a rooftop garden extending from a classroom, or is that not allowed?
No, it certainly is. We've done it plenty of times. Yep.
Quick question about the, something you mentioned, you said the pre-K classrooms are typically bigger, and I see that in the plans you've drawn here, they're a lot of thousands square feet. Could you just explain, I'm curious, why, why they're so much bigger than our average class sizes for K through five? Especially given that there's only, there's a relatively few kids per classroom. I think it's probably on average, how many is it on average, what did you say?
It's between fifteen and twenty.
Fifteen and twenty. So we, how many students do we have in the pre-K right now?
Um, right now, some of the sections, it starts out at fifteen and it can go to twenty by the end of the year, so there's fifteen.
Is it, is it half, is it half-day though? It's like, it's, it's, I understood it to be a half-day program.
It is half-day, so there's-
So they're all, they're all coming in the morning, you're saying then?
No, no, there's like fifteen in the morning and fifteen in the afternoon. There's thirty, thirty students, fifteen and fifteen in the two mornings sections, fifteen and fifteen in the afternoon sections, and then one half-day of our smaller self-contained classroom. That one has up to ten. But the other classrooms have fifteen to sixty students.
Fifteen, okay.
For each section.
Okay, so they have relatively fewer students than the, the higher grades, and yet the classrooms are, and they're only there for a few hours a day, yet the classrooms are significantly bigger. So I was wondering, what's the, what's the reason for that?
Traditionally, the type of teaching that's happening for kindergarten and pre-K are, is a little bit different and requires more room. Whatever the district would like us to design for as far as a limitation on the capacity, however, it's, it would be, I think, designed for some flexibility for future enrollment. And if, but whatever we would, whatever we want to hit, that's completely fine, and we can, it's just allocating more space for the movement that's required in those types of teaching environments.
Often more play and more movement, so.
Yeah. I mean, seeing it first person, yeah, it's a lot more rolling around on the ground than sitting at a desk.
And there's also, we have more structural equipment. Pam, you had mentioned there's the amount of staff that goes with the program as well, which is significant.
So in those classrooms, you would have related service providers attached to the space, and then the bathroom space is included in there. But instruction in an early childhood environment is, is more of a centered-based instruction. So there's different learning centers within the classroom, so you have to create those centers with new furniture within the classroom, create instructional spaces, work five instructional spaces within the classroom, plus one large group learning space.
Also, to, to further comment about the roof, with this option, and one of the benefits of this option is actually that the roof here for the multipurpose room can pop up higher than just the first story, which gives it a little bit more volume and makes it a little bit more versatile and helps with acoustics in that space. So that's the benefit of this concept as well. And the, the library then can do the same. And it's nice because from a massing standpoint, when you're looking at the makeup of Ames, it is, those are both large masses then that are behind a large mass right here. So when you look at the aesthetic makeup of the solution, it, it is nice within the context of the community.
And we're still talking about multipurpose rooms being used for lunch space during the day.
That's correct. Or, and other functions that are currently being used, like, you know, band and orchestra instruments being played in the library, and so having a space to, to use outside of that.
I have a question. I mean, I'm pretty, probably very simplistic on this because I'm just looking at, what problems are we trying to solve? How it looks, where you guys want to put the classrooms, and size. I, I know the facilities, the committee did a great job. I'm not gonna sort of question that. But I guess I'm just sort of looking at the four design options, and I really don't see the difference between one and, one and two and three and four. I mean, do we have possibly a little more detailed breakdown on what, what the benefits are that differentiate those options, like what problems we're trying to solve? Because if you look at the, the problems we're trying to solve, we look at option one and two, they solve the same problems. Three and four solve the same problem. So for me, I don't see really the-
I think the difference, they solve, they solve them in smaller and bigger ways. Like, that's the way I'm looking at it. Option one is very bare bones, like this is the minimal-
And they provide, there's additional, there's more square footage, more flexibility, more learning space that you, you buy for that, for that option.
Right, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, is, because there was a list of problems that we were trying to solve at the beginning, is do we have sort of the list of like what each design's going to solve for us, like those, a little bit more specific or a little bit broad?
It maybe even helps to just explain a little bit sort of where these ideas came from. So I think option one really came from this idea of, how do we go at this with sort of the highest degree of efficiency and just say, Ames needs more small group learning spaces and more small, you know, large group learning spaces, can we just fix that? Can we just sort of do a relatively small addition? And then option two, the way I recall it from the committee conversations, that it really evolved when we said, what if we just put early learners over at Ames? And so really, that design idea kind of emerged from just putting early learners. But we realized by just putting early learners over there, we hadn't solved any of the other Ames crowding issues, and so it really wasn't a great way to look at solving the problem. But then we looked at it and said, it's kind of an interesting idea to sort of better solve the Ames crowding. It's sort of could be an either or. It's early learners or solving Ames' problems, but it became an interesting design idea to consider. I think as Don was sharing, number three starts to really check all the boxes, and I think four checks all the boxes and then some. So I think it also, we wanted to have some choice and some options. So I think it's helpful, maybe Lindon Rich wanted to add additional comments, it was really the work of the committee, and there are a lot of other options. All of them started to have similarities and differences from each other, but how could we hone in and say, this is what we have to address?
Right, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, what is that then some? What is that extra that we're getting with the, with the additional, like essentially eight, four thousand square feet?
In terms of option four, I mean, you know, what the committee also is going to sort of share, and it's really the next slide, is that option three is the one that seems to make most sense. So it's interesting to look at and then some, right? What does more space get us? What would that additional roof access give us? And what about a multipurpose room that starts to feel more like almost a two-story type room? What about the potential of a rooftop garden? Those are all really nice things to think about, but I think we felt option three, and I might as well just say it right from my spot here, see, I stood in the wrong place before, anyway. But anyway, um, option three checks those boxes. We feel like it does it in a way that, that does feel efficient to the solving of our, our problems, that there's an efficiency of cost, that it really, I mean, this really was a jigsaw puzzle. I mean, this really was, how does this solve the problems at Blythe? Could Blythe be a two-section school? Where do early learners really belong long-term? How do we address some crowding at Central? I think we address some crowding at Central by, over time, having more students who live at Blythe that might otherwise have been Central students. So I don't know if that fully answers your question, but some of the background and conversation-
If I'm hearing, Dave, I think maybe, are you saying you're looking for differentiation between the, because looking at it this view, the two seem pretty, you know, they seem pretty equal, but with different square footage and different prices.
Right, because I'd be just looking, I guess from my perspective, option one and option three, because I really don't see the difference.
Between one and three, really?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying two.
Oh, one and two? So, can I just give a little more background about like where option two came from? Just, I don't know if this is gonna answer your question at all, but just wanna say it. So option one was kind of the idea of like, what's the bare bone? Like, what can we do to solve some Ames problems and be as efficient as possible? And then two came out of like, the way I feel, and this is just my opinion, if you're gonna build one floor, you might as well build two, like, for the price, that's just, seems logical. And we started looking at it, and we're like, oh, I wonder if this space, this amount of square footage on one, like, one addition, could you do early learners there? And Merrill and Todd and Pam looked through it and were trying to allocate spaces, and they were like, no, this is too small. So this is how we got from option two to option three. Option two is definitely too small to move early learners, but to us, it was kind of a nice option of, it's not just bare bones, it gives a little more space to Ames. So for just, just an extra million and a half, I don't really mean that, but in context, like, you would get this, this much additional space, which just allows that much more flexibility. And I think the thing that Carrie kept mentioning is all of these spaces are going to be, they're flexibles. You know, like, it could be a classroom, and in ten years, if we needed to be something else, it could be that. So it just allows for the additional space to allow flexibility in the district, especially since option two would keep early learners at Blythe. Therefore, Ames would have to be the space that we need ability to, you know. So to me, option one is just now, what we're doing. Two is kind of like for future growth, without moving the early learners.
This is where you have an excellent point, that when we looked at option two, we were still like, is there moving early learners over at Ames? But realized that Ames will be as tight, if not tighter than we are now, if we moved early learners, and that's where we found, was that in option three?
We also talked about Ames possibly needing to be four sections if we did move early learners.
Right.
In the future, if we still maintained overcrowding at the other schools. So there was-
Like, somebody's gotta be the overflow.
Our two was giving us an extra classroom that we weren't getting in option one.
One, one big difference to me between option three and four, it's not highlighted here, is the outdoor space.
Yeah, yeah.
In option three, you've got a huge contiguous area for playground, which is really very attractive, whereas in option four, it's chopped up and a lot of the space on Loudon is basically wasted, as far as I can tell.
Well, and it prevents this, this odd, well, I, in my opinion, a little bit of a difficult situation with the parking in the front. And you've got what I consider a reasonably historic building with another addition on the side that changes its view and its intent from the original architect, which could be a problem with the village. I know we can get variances, but I still see it as, how, what kind of, what do we want it to look like when you approach the building?
And adding on to Jeff's point with the outdoor space, when you move early learners over, you're going to need an outdoor space for early learners as well that is earmarked for little, littler ones. So the space, I feel like in option three, to me, I, I'll just, I mean, I'll say it too, I prefer option, I prefer building out back. I don't like building both sides because of the outdoor space issue, especially when you, we need space for just the Ames kids because they don't have space. We need space, but if we're moving early learners, we need space for them too. So I think that provides the most outdoor learning possibilities. I think you could do, you know, a playground, a hard surface, even like a, you know, outdoor learning area, you know, I think-
A natural area.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I like doing that. I feel like it feels, well, I'll just, because I-
Why don't you just tell us what you like?
I was like, just let me go on here, no, um-
Keep it going, keep it going.
No, um, what was I gonna say? No, I forgot.
Talking about outdoor space?
Which one do you want?
Outdoor space.
You were advocating for three.
Yeah, I just don't remember what I, I was about to say something that was so poignant.
We were thinking, we're looking at option two, and Carrie brought this up, the separate drop-off and pickup for early childhood is huge, just currently do a pickup and drop-off issues where I'm getting emails, phone calls daily with the slow traffic coming through. So whereas option four does not allow that because we just put it out by the kindergarten, existing kindergarten. So when you're looking at traffic flow, it really compensates that, as well as the larger outdoor places for the students and parking. So it really is the whole package that we were looking for.
So if we can go back though to the, that checklist or the comparison view. So I, I was really surprised that the minimal differences in price between three and four is given the amount of construction and demolition on one side of the building versus two. I mean, is, is that realistic? Are we taking on a lot more risk in such a situation? Or risk the disruption of, of the building or the classrooms, or I'm-
I would agree. I think you would see more, more effective proposals from contractors if the addition was located in one location. They might have an excuse to inflate for two different areas. Or it might be a phased approach where you do this over the course of, you know, a couple different years, and then that would add costs. So you're absolutely correct, that, that might be an issue as we move forward, although we factor in, in inflation for, for that here.
So it is factored in?
There's a contingency in these, in these numbers. Again, as close as we can get for this, for the, at this juncture.
That seems low. We haven't accommodated for furniture.
These are real estimates, guys. I mean, these aren't based on any, anything particularly factual about these plans. These, this is Carrie coming together with a, with sort of a square footage assumption, and that's sort of the range that you see within each category. It could be less expensive than what we're representing here. It could be more expensive. It's really a fact, a factor of what kind of finishes do we want in these spaces? What are, what are our needs as a district in each of these spaces? So I guess I would just put, you know, a cautionary word out there that this is an estimate, guys, and it really depends on what this board coalesces around, not just with respect to a plan, not, not just if this board walks away and says, let's do number three. There's a lot of work that happens after that that's really gonna nail down the price.
Right. I think also, just to Dan's point, I, I think there must be like a large fixed cost in all of these plans, because the highest cost per square foot is in the smallest plan, and then it goes down as-
Yes, there is a fixed cost associated with the site in each one of them. Absolutely. Because right now, we don't know what storm water detention requirements are going to include, because we have not engineered to that point. We need to get engineers involved next to under, start to understand that and get a, and get some type of capacity that's going to be required. We, we've, I've allocated a contingency for it. I've put a number to it, but it could be less, it could be more. But you're absolutely right, there is a consistent allotment for the site in each. And the site could change, dependent upon, you know, that obviously the fourth option is a lot different than what the third option entails and the others. Or you could say tonight, I want to see some, some other change and meshing of those two, and then we'd have to relook at that as well, so.
And a question for Mr. Gierman as well, though. I'm, I'm wondering, with the current enrollment or how things currently are, is it, is it fair to say there's a bathroom crunch, particularly on the second floor?
Oh, yeah, there's definitely a bathroom crunch for students and staff alike. Yes, yes, yeah.
I guess I'm wondering, I don't know that any of these plans-
Wait, the teachers are allowed to go to the bathroom? We never had time to go to the bathroom. Is that true or not true, that you never get to go to the bathroom?
On the occasion, they do.
They never get to go to the bathroom.
They're not allowed to go.
It's ridiculous, no.
We tried to schedule that. Yes, there is a bathroom issue with the amount of students we have, only having two boys and two girls bathrooms for student population that is approaching three hundred and seventy students. It becomes an issue, it becomes an issue. Even when you look at the amount of, imagine a bathroom break with little ones trying to go to the bathroom, maybe two grade levels, first and fourth grade, while band and orchestra's going on with all the instruments in the hallway. I mean, yeah, it's, it's definitely an issue, and I think Carrie can speak more to, you know, traditional bathrooms and stuff like that.
Well, certainly, though, that would be the type of thing that would get carved out of that square footage, or added to it, you know, depending upon what direction.
I didn't know if that was discussed, or I didn't see it on the list of things, the problems to solve.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it, well, it sounds like it is, but.
That's a good question. I mean, that's as practical as it gets for what the kids need.
As part of this, this process, and that is a detail, the entire building would be reviewed from a normally plumbing code standpoint, and so when you put an addition on to this, that would all have to be considered and rectified at that point.
And that comes in the design development phase.
That is correct.
Which would be the next phase, yeah.
So, I had another question about the gymnasium, because I seem to recall the last time we had, we reviewed plans like this, there was some discussion of the gymnasium not being up to code, or having troubles or issues, and I guess I was surprised to see there's not really much renovation around it in any of the plans.
That's correct. It was determined that that was not some, that was not a priority. So, the priorities were to solve the issue of having a place to eat, the library, completing the third section, adding that small group, flexible learning areas to accommodate all those issues that were discussed earlier, and to separate parking and play. And it was really those four attributes that the committee concentrated on, as opposed to what you saw previously.
And that was really a request that, when we had the discussion back in July, that how could we, so the Ames Visioning Committee, part of their, their job was to sort of dream big, and then there was this, how can we distill that down, and how can we be more efficient in our efforts? So, we really did take, you know, sort of a much more focused approach to, to this, the second round.
I think some of those things that we learned through the Ames Visioning, though, can be solved in, in some of these, in this concept, and depending on the occupancy that you're dealing with on an annual basis, that some of those spaces that were desired can be utilized within the context of this addition.
Rich Lynde said that she, you know, she, she's made an argument for, in favor of option three. Did you, I'm just curious, you went through the facilities planning as well, do you have any, anything to add to that, or?
Sure. You know, as you see, I don't even know if we got to this point, I don't know what page number it is, but it shows that the Facilities Committee recommended option number three.
Yeah, next slide, after.
So, we didn't get to that point yet?
Yeah, we didn't get to that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Don, I stole your thunder.
It's there. It's out, yeah, sorry.
Martha covered it.
So, there was, I would say that there's good general support amongst the entire committee about that, that option. Me personally, I think our, our solution is that option, but I don't, I think design development will fine-tune that option. So, when I look at it and I see that it's at 14,000 square feet, I think once we go through design development, maybe that's a little bit less than that, maybe that's at 13,000 square feet. I think that, that next effort, which will be a multi-month effort, is where the real fine-tuning comes into play. When we talk about, hey, I think we need more restrooms, where the code is this for restrooms, but I think practically we need to add more, that's going to be the push and the pull throughout that process that's really going to show us where we land.
But part of what we're saying is, we would only be asking DLA to do that work around one, one of these concepts.
That's right. We could, we could do it around more, it'll just cost more money and more time.
Yeah, and I 100% agree with Rich, but I would say, like, could it be 14,000 or 15,000? Whereas he would say 14 or 13. I think there's a little, you know, like.
I'm always, you're always.
Money is no option, yeah.
That's why you guys.
Yeah.
I said, Linda said it, not me.
These different parts are.
No, I think if, as we move forward, we should pick an ideal option moving forward.
So that we can.
Doing design, not even that, doing detailed design that's going to be just wrong way, that's just.
But do you have any thoughts, initial thoughts on the, on the four options that we're talking about tonight?
No, I think it's fairly clear that option three is the preferred option. I think the bare bones really doesn't get us anywhere. It's spending an awful lot of money for a very limited amount of benefit. I mean, you can see that the, with option one, you're getting half to a third of the square footage, yet it ends up costing half, and it doesn't really solve any of the problems. And I think we've got a responsibility to spend our, spend our tax money wisely. And if we do find a permanent home for ECE, that's obviously a benefit, too. I think, have we heard from Ames' parents that they're somewhat in support of, of early learners moving?
So, some of this is, Ames' parents were waiting for tonight for the official rollout, but we had a Ames PTA meeting where Rich and I attended just December, and one of the questions was, would early learners possibly be moving? And we certainly shared that that was one of the configurations we were looking at. And, you know, Todd, you've had some additional PTA conversations.
I had a different conversation with my parents throughout this school year and last school year. And was there concern with early childhood possibly coming to Ames? Yes. But the only concerns stemmed from, it'd taken away from space that we're building for Ames. Once, you know, we had those conversations, I said, no, we're going to build the additional space for Ames, and then additional space on top of that for early learners. The parents were very supportive of bringing early learners over to Ames. And I think it's important that they do have a place that they call home. I feel strongly about that, and I feel a lot of our Ames' parents felt strongly about that as well. So, that's the representation of parents I spoke with in conversations I had through PTA meetings, having an in-depth conversation at PTA meetings, but sidebar conversations with parents. So, like I said, the biggest concern was, okay, they're coming here, but how much space are they going to take away from what we're building for Ames?
Right.
And the answer is pretty much, with design option three, none, none at all.
I'd like to see, as if we, if the board is in favor of moving forward with option three, to address those additional, the bathroom needs.
Absolutely.
And also refining those, the space, the spaces a little bit more.
Absolutely.
And then, and after we see that, but after we see that, then you move forward with the detailed design.
Dave, did you have any, you had some clear comments about the difference between one and two, and three and four, but did you have any?
Right, well, not necessarily, like, right. I mean, for me, option three is, is the obvious choice, in my opinion. I mean, it solves all of our problems, and I think it's, it's, I think it would apply for the future. So, I mean, I'm, if the board is willing to, I'm personally ready to go with design. I mean, option three for the detailed design, I don't, I think, we've been talking about this for a long time, I think it's time for us to now make the decision and move, move forward. I understand what you're saying, Joel, but I guess, I, I'm seeing that these, this layout conceptually looks good.
Oh, no, I'm, I think maybe you misunderstand. And I'm, option three is the way to go, I believe, but I think based on what we just heard now about bathroom space, and maybe the early learners entering the building from the back, that that needs to be further defined in the floor plan, and we would see that, and then you move forward, you continue. Make sure that that space is good.
But doesn't that come out in the detailed designer?
Absolutely does.
Or does that need to go to that?
And all of that, absolutely.
It's really a next phase, it's really saying, we would recommend that, and we don't have to decide this tonight, this, you know, we really wanted everyone to have time to kind of hear it all, begin to mull it over, but the idea would be that we would make one recommendation of one design idea to DLA, and then in that design development, moving towards schematics, would be things like considering the additional bathrooms and the drop-off and that.
Can I ask you a question about the setbacks on design three and four?
Sure.
On the rear side of the building, is that just, do, that, do you foresee that being a problem, or is that pretty standard? Like, would there be, I know when you talk about the front of the building, there's a lot more difficulty with the village and things like that. Do you foresee any issues with that on the backside?
Oh, no, there were plenty within the requirements.
You're within, right, you're within. It looks, yeah, it looks pretty generous to me, but it's not a drawing, and it's hard to tell.
I actually should have mentioned that, that's a, that's a good point. The dotted red line, you see, is the setback requirement.
Right.
And the space.
So, we, we have plenty of room to work with there.
Correct.
Sure, do you have any general comments about the, the four conceptual plans that we've seen?
Yes, I, you know, I don't support moving ECE every year or two, I think it's bad for the program. I would like them to have a home. And I think if we can move the early learners to Ames and keep it there without obstructing the needs of Ames' children, I think three is the way to go. I like that it doesn't change the original facade, I think it keeps it more in the Riverside tradition, without having diagonal spaces in the front, and more, I like the play, the play looks great to me. I think we need some natural space that's consistent, so you're not kind of funneling children around in these narrow spaces. So, you know, I, I do think these cost estimates are, will rise, which is natural, but I think we have to be careful with that.
Right. Dan, did you have any additional comments, other than the ones you've made already, or?
Well, it's, as has been said, I think out of the options listed, three is the obvious choice. However, I must say, that concerns me, given that, the last time we saw options, I really felt like we were steered towards one option and one option only. And I'm not, I'm not on the committee, I'm not part of the deliberation, so, just as the outsider looking in, though, I guess that worries me, that I've not really been given options. It seems like there's one clear one.
So, I totally understand that, and this was actually what I was about to say, and I just remembered. It's not poignant. I take that completely back, but it is a thought. I went into the Facilities Advisory Committee thinking, yeah, we're going to have, like, four options that are all going to be pretty equal, and we're going to be able to present, and they're, they're going to all kind of offer the same thing, and it's going to be, which do we just like better, kind of, in my mind? And then starting to work with the actual shape of this property, it started to become very clear to us that, like, that's not really the way it's going to happen. There's not, I think we, you know, you try to look building back, side, and back, you know, I think those are really the only two options to create, and the one, building side and back, seems like it creates more problems than it does solves them, just because of the outdoor play. So, I completely agree with you. I was going into this hoping that we would come out with, like, like, three options that are really, like, which are we going to choose of these three options? Like, they're pretty equal, and going through the process, it just, the constraints of the property just doesn't allow for that.
Actually, this is one thing I really liked about this presentation. We saw the presentation last June, and it was, it was interesting, you know, it was looking at different ideas floating around, different options, but it wasn't, it didn't strike me as organic, it didn't look, it wasn't taking a district-wide view. And it wasn't like, to your point, it wasn't kind of saying, we've done the optimization, we've thought really hard about this, and, and, and when you go through a process like that, things start to, at some points, they start to coalesce and fall together and saying, okay, this, this, given what we want to accomplish, this is what sort of it has to be.
Yeah.
And so, that narrows your options away, but you end up coming to maybe what is the best solution. So, I think in that sense, you know, the reason why maybe it doesn't feel like there's many options, real options, is because there really aren't.
To me, it came down to not really the design options, but the options of programming. What do we want to do with our programming to solve our district needs? That's where, to me, the big option comes in. Are we going to move early learners, or are we not? And how does that piece together everything else? So, I went into it thinking we'd have, like, just three design options, choose one, but it more so feels like we are talking programmatically. We have such limited space, so it's just, so that's, I totally hear you, and I kind of feel the same way.
I'd like to add a comment. I think, you know, based on what you said, Dan, that you feel like there really aren't any other options than the one, that feels to me like the Facility Advisors Committee did the job the right way. You know, we looked at option one as, what's the bare bones that Todd and his team need at Ames? And that's what, that's what option one is. Option two is a little bit of an expansion on that. Option three is, are solutions at Ames, but also solving other problems in the district? How do we get those early learners over? Which then creates a two-section school at Blythe, which I think most of us feel is a real solution there. And once we have that capacity at Blythe, that alleviates space issues that we have here at Central. So, we, we feel like that that one really solves not just Ames' problems, but district problems.
So.
And then option four is just to confuse you, so.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, it's to show, like, well, you could build side and back.
Right, right.
But why don't we build a third story? Let's do that.
Martha, were you looking for specific direction tonight, or just, just having this conversation and coming back in February and giving specific direction, or what you guys, what were you guys thinking?
I think expediency is good.
I mean, it sounds like there's a.
I personally like option three for all the reasons that have been mentioned. It seems, I don't know about the exact configurations, but the, where the masses.
The general.
With the early learners, the rough size, all seem, the playgrounds, all seems to, to make a lot of sense to me.
And, you know, I think.
But I don't know if people want more time to reflect on this, or what?
I think.
There's a group of us who have lived and breathed it for a long time. That's why I tried to stay quiet through this meeting, because I want you guys to really give us your thoughts, and if you guys want more time to digest this, you need more.
And I would, I would say, I don't think a decision should be made tonight.
Be nice to hear from others.
Because we need to hear from community members, like, I think that's.
That's the first time, and some of them, it's the first time they've seen it. We've been, you know, cashing over things, but they may not.
So, maybe the best thing to do, then, is to think about this, hear, hear comments from the community, think about this. We'll be talking about facilities again on February 6th, with Hollywood, Central, and Blythe, and maybe we'll get some more comments in that time, and then we can kind of go from there. Is that reasonable?
Those were our last two slides, I believe, Karen, if you want to advance the slides.
Sorry, we kind of podged to that.
Just reminding people that this really is a whole integrated approach, that we want to look at Blythe, Central, and Hollywood also, but we also felt it's just a lot to digest all in one meeting, so we'll put that on the February 6th agenda. We do want community feedback, some of it to, to share information, and then also to get, to get feedback. And over time, it may be feedback around, what does reconfiguring our library really mean? How does security really feel? What about outdoor play? You know, so, all those things where we want community feedback, but it's not going to be, would the community like us to start over? You know, I mean, I think it's, it's more around, I think, really honoring and respecting the work that this committee has done, as I said, over more than 20 meetings, where we went back and looked, and more than 40 hours of time together, and a lot of back-and-forth, and a lot of really wanting to solve problems. It really didn't, it really went from, how do we do an addition at Ames, to how do we really solve our district-wide problems? And that was really the right effort of the committee.
And I look forward to being a part of the Visioning Committee, all the exciting stuff that happened there. I look forward to the design phase, because I think that's where a lot of that exciting work will be incorporated. So, I'm looking forward to that time back.
And with that, with the idea of community involvement, I'd like to see email Martha that, to the, to the district parents, that says, this is out there, please. I want either request commentary, I know, we know Bob's going to do an article.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
A specific ask is always a good thing, and then just input specifically to the.
This is, this is a lot of money, and this is only part of the plan. So, it's obviously, you want to hear from the community what their thoughts are, pro, con.
I mean, not necessarily that the community, the community is going to give us different options, but this is, what are your thoughts on these?
I think that's a really good idea. So, it sounds like then we kind of have had a good conversation. Does anyone have any something specific to talk about around what we heard tonight, or before our next meeting at facilities?
I just got a question about materials for play. When will that discussion happen?
Are we just focusing on the building part for a while, and then outdoor space later?
Yeah, I think, because we're not even sure of timeline, you know, we're.
Only because I was wondering about substrate requirements or things like that, that could be part of the construction is, you know, talks that we have. Or if we just want grants, you know, what are those talks gonna be like?
Those are decisions that need to be made, and.
I would, I would think earlier than later.
Absolutely, because it'll affect attention.
Right.
So we certainly want to, want to understand that going in.
Good.
Maybe we can talk about that a little bit on.
Yeah, I just thought if we're gonna engage in detail, that would be important.
All right, good. Well, then, if there's no further specific conversation, we'll come back a couple weeks and talk more. I'd like to have the board thank the facilities advisory committee and the vision committee. This, I think, was a really thoughtful, comprehensive analysis. Took a long time, a lot of meetings, and a lot of, you know, changes along the way. But I think what you've come up with here is objectively quite good. So I'd like to thank you all your work on that. So with that, we come to our second public comment. Does anyone here, does anyone in the audience who have listened to this, have any comments, initial thoughts that you'd like to make? Now's the time to make them.
Were you, were you elected? That hasn't happened in a while. It's kind of like.
State your, your name and address.
Chris Tokar is 26, North Gate. One of our questions is funding for this. And is this completely coming out of reserves? Is there a plan to take out loans or ask the taxpayers to pay for more? But that is a, that's also a concern that I think others might have.
We had that conversation, just to give you a brief answer, we had, we had a conversation last year, I think. We met with someone who was a PMA, who advises school districts on financing. And she laid out several different options for us. But one of the, one of the issues we have in our district, which is kind of unique to school districts around the state, is that we don't have the ability to take debt without a referendum. So any way we could go and get sort of debt would be to go to the taxpayer and say, we want to, we want to borrow some more money. As I say, to get debt, which also is accompanied with an increased tax rate. I mean, debt without an increased tax rate doesn't really help us. And I guess it was appealing to the board at that time, if I correctly summarize it, is that with the amount of money that we currently have in reserves, if we were to go to the taxpayer and say, we want to borrow more money, it just wouldn't fly. And that was kind of our thinking at that point in time. So does anyone have any, any further?
I think that's an accurate recollection of the discussions.
So the price tag we're looking at here is probably with the other schools, I don't know the exact numbers, but you know, if it, if it's in the ballpark of 15 million, I believe the finance director has done some work. We're gonna talk about that, I think, in the next meeting, the meeting after that, and the budget side of things. But I think our, I think the projections, the preliminary projections I've seen, even with the expenditure out of reserves, would still leave us with a healthy reserve balance, you know, looking five years out, so.
Okay. But, and just, so tonight is really to talk about Ames. February 6 is really to talk about Blythe, Central, and Hollywood. And then our thought is February board meeting would really be to look at financial overview. So we, you know, it all is a package, it just takes a while to get it all the pieces out.
But as a whole, all changes, facility changes, will be coming out of the reserves.
That's right.
The whole full package.
Currently.
We discussed this last year.
That's a current concept, right. We cannot.
Okay, yeah, we had this talk.
We don't know what's gonna happen in the future, right?
Right, in the future, who knows? But, yeah.
Katie's got a public account.
Hi, my name's Katie Gregory. I live on South Coast. I just wanted to confirm, my understanding was that, at this point, given that the school district does not have that debt service extension base, they're unable to issue really unlimited tax debt. But the district does, presumably with their, the debt limit, you do have the ability to issue debt certificates, which would be that general obligation limited tax, which is what was issued in 2011.
Correct.
So the district does have the flexibility.
You're right.
To issue that.
We can do that, but that, without additional, we can issue debt, but without any additional revenue. And since we have to pay the debt back, or rather pay it back out of reserves or out of our current tax base, it doesn't, we decided.
You're essential.
Sure. Correct. But I just wanted to clarify for perhaps people who aren't doing municipal finance on a daily basis, that there is certainly a very big difference between saying that the district cannot issue debt to pay this, versus perhaps seeing it as that first budget obligation.
The key, the key, the key point is, you're right, you're correct. The key point is not that we can't issue debts, we can't issue debt that has an additional tax component to it. That's, that's requires a referendum.
Right. To go to referendum, to go, you go to referendum, that would then provide the district to issue that general obligation limited tax.
Correct. And without that additional tax revenue, given how much money we have in reserves, it doesn't make any financial sense to actually do the debt certificate.
Sure. Sure. I just heard that and just wanted to clarify, because I imagine there may have been some people in the audience that we're not sure about that.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the audience at this time? If not, then thanks for a great presentation. And we will take, take this up again in February and.
Future meeting dates.
Oh, future meeting dates. February 6, 2019, with the whole, that'll be at Hauser again. February 20, 2019, regular business at 7:00 PM at Hauser. March 6, meeting the whole at 7:00 PM, and March 20, 2019, regular business at Hauser.